Call to order, this September 8th, 2014 City Council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, we'd ask for a moment of silence to ask for guidance, give thanks, or to just quietly relax. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Buck.
Mr. Givernangelo?
Here.
Mrs. Smith? Here. Mrs. Caldwell-Kravner?
Here.
Mr. Scibora?
Here.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Present.
Ms. Beazey?
Here.
Mayor Wolfert?
Here.
All present.
At this time, we've all had the opportunity to read the minutes from the August 11th meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move the minutes of the August 11th, 2014 meeting be approved and accepted and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, may I have an approval of the fiscal department reports and paid bills for the month of August 2014?
So moved.
Second, please. Any questions or discussion?
I have just a few comments I've discussed with Ms. Buck. And currently, there are no bills being paid that are outside of budgeted areas, is that correct?
Right, there were a couple of problems that we had with the heating system here and the cooling system. We knew about those. And Company Six had, I guess, some age back problems also. But I think all the departments, a lot for those type of things, especially since our systems are... Yeah, there isn't anything that's out of order.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have the citizens' request portion of the meeting. This is to discuss agenda items only. Anything on the agenda that you would like to comment on, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and try to keep your comments to three to five minutes. And again, at the end of the meeting, we will have another agenda session or another open citizens' request to discuss anything else that's on your mind, but this portion is specifically for agenda items.
I have an issue with item C4.
Can you use... Fill your names and numbers.
My name is Jim Schmucker. I reside at 334 James Street. I'm here to address the city council regarding the encroachment request at 1636 Ridge Avenue. I would like the city council to decline this request and ask the homeowner to move the fence off the city property and onto their property line. I am asking this due to the fact that the tax map shows that the property... Their property is 26 feet wide. At the rear of the property where the fence is located, the fence measures 30 feet, 30 feet, 4 inches. That is four feet over into the alley. And it is, uh... In the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmucker.
James Miller, 127 East Ford Avenue. I also agree that we should deny the encroachment agreement because I think we're just giving away too much of Latrobe property anyway, so... Even though he may not own it, encroaching on Latrobe property and right-of-way property, and I don't think it's right. The second thing that I'd like to mention is, we're going to approve this evening a person for the water authority. One of the gentlemen that is applying for the position, Mr. Fenton, is an engineer. I think he would be greatly appreciated and helpful in the areas of the water authority, and I would hope that the council would take that into effect. And also, I know that he's a... Lives in Unity Township. However, I think that may even help us a little bit to resolve some of the problems that we may have or have been having with Unity Township and our agreement that they're trying to finalize now. Also, on the accounts payable, there was a payment totaling almost $39,000 for CB Tracy and Associates. I was just wondering what that was for.
CB Tracy and Associates is the company that we use for our healthcare. But Barb, you can explain a little more detail.
That's all right. Thank you very much. That's all that was interesting.
Hi, my name's Kylie Pavlick, and I'm the resident at 1636 Ridge Avenue with the encroachment on the fence. And I just wanted to ask a question as to, since we are two feet on the property, if we did move that back, even though we maintain the grass outside on the property, would the city come to mow that, or should we continue to just take care of it? That would be my only question, if we did move it... If we weren't granted the encroachment license and then had to move it back two feet.
I'm sorry, the answer I was giving to the mayor is that... No, I'm sorry. That is not... It's not the responsibility of a property owner to mow grass or cut weeds or do anything within the alley. It's our responsibility as a city to maintain our streets and alleys, in whatever form they may be.
Joe Or... Have you been down that alley? Do you know where this is?
Yes, I do.
Is it causing congestion there? Is there...
I was asking my opinion if I thought I could get equipment through in case of emergency, and I said that I could. I had spoke with the city manager and said that I could. Just to elaborate, Mr. Kelly, I know what the ordinance does say, that nobody is responsible for cutting grass on private property, but it would literally be impossible to take on such a task, to cut all the property that adjoins the property line that might be on the city. It's just an unreasonable task.
I wasn't suggesting that we do that. I'm simply saying it really is not the property owner's responsibility.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schmucker, did you want to say something else?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Chief Brazili, do you know what we're talking about as far as getting fire equipment down there?
Yeah, we discussed that, and there's not a problem with us either. I mean, we've been doing it for years. If we had to, we'd back in, we'd back out, or we'd pull in and back out, so...
Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't...
Yeah.
I see the pictures.
Yeah. It's not going to restrict us in any way.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Justin Pavlick at 1636 Ridge Avenue, where we're discussing the encroachment. My final comment on it is that when we put up the fence, we have bushes right up against the fence. Those bushes were there when we moved in, and on the adjacent property that's now being renovated, they have overgrowth of bushes and stuff that we're even encroaching more than our fences. There is, in my opinion, ample enough room, and we're just requesting the permit because, you know, we just feel that it should be right. But I see both points of that, so...
Thank you.
Sure, sure. Okay. In regards to that, bushes can be cut back, fences cannot be cut back. Fence is a permanent fixture, and it's going to remain there until it falls down, or it gets hit by a car, or, you know, somebody... You know, it's a permanent thing. It's not like a shrub that you can cut back and go from there.
I was thinking the same question. Mr. Schmucker, is it in your way? Is it hard for you to maneuver around it? What concern?
My concern is, it's on city property one. They were instructed that they had to put the fence on the property line, which they did not do. And that's my issue. If you don't listen, you know, why should they be rewarded, you know, for not listening to Ann Powell and saying that needed to be put on the property line? And I've been living there for 19 years. As I come down an alley, it used to be a straight shot. We have to veer off a little bit so we don't hit the mirror of the egg.
Do you have a question? Any other comments? Any other comments under... For the agenda items?
Uh, Ms. Pavlick, did anybody else tell you you couldn't do that?
She just described to me how to measure for it. It was... She told me to find the middle of our alley to 10 feet over. And it could have been my math. I'm not... I cut hair. I don't do fencing. And just gave the guys right away. We have... I put in the picture, it's a big cement thing in the middle. We tried to put it where the old fencing used to be, but they literally cemented this flower fixture in my yard. It would have been a mess, and we just... Since no one came to measure it, we didn't think it was that big of a deal. And I apologize if we made anybody mad.
Did you get a permit then? Did you get a permit to put the fence up from Ann?
Yeah.
So Ann gave you a permit?
Did you just recently put it up?
It's been up for maybe...
Since May.
May, yeah. Couple months it's been done.
Any other comments under the citizens' requests?
Where approximately is that house?
Is that house?
Um, sixteen... We're right behind... We're... I'm sure you all heard of Mr. Jacobs. We're right beside him in that... That end alley. On Ridge Long... Ridge Avenue.
You were at James Street and turned on Ridge, your left. There will be a house, then it will be the alley, on the right-hand side. If parallel to James heading up toward what...
Anything else? Moving on to committee reports. Finance Committee. Dr. Madeline, anything other than what we discussed?
I have one that I discussed earlier about the...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. No, okay. Public Safety, Jerry, Julie?
Still working on getting people to join in there for the watch. So if you know anybody, send them down where we need some people.
Next week's the meeting in this room, always open to the public. Everyone want pizza?
What's the time and date? Six?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, September 15th.
Personnel Committee? Tricia and Mike?
We are working on getting a meeting scheduled with the House Bean Staff Agent to try to begin negotiations for the contract that expires at the end of this year.
Public Works, Jerry, Madeline?
I'm still waiting for the guy from Norfolk Southern. And I have a question for Wayne. You met with Sore to discuss the transfer station?
Yes, we did.
Anything come of it, or...
Really, it was just more or less a meet and greet. At that point, we're going to have another meeting to move forward. They suggested some marketing ideas which we're going to use. I'll let the council see it before we, you know, we send it out, but basically, it was more like a meet and greet.
Community Development Committee, Julie, Tricia, and Peggy. Any board and authority reports?
Do you have a question?
Yeah.
Why would the board ever have to report authority reports? It seems like...
I'm not sure. That's always been on there, and no one ever comes. My dad used to come, but that was it.
Can't we request them to come? How many do they meet? Even if they meetings?
Well, we get the minutes from... We get the minutes from Park and Rec, and I'm on that commission. There's just nothing to report right now. I mean, everybody knows that Unity Township is pulling out of the merger, so I'm not sure how... We're not sure yet how that's going to impact us. But as far as the municipal authority... Sorry, what? Jim? I'm sorry. And as far as these other committees?
The Civil Service Commission rarely meets, so I can understand them. And the same is basically true of Latrobe Industrial Development for it. They don't have that many.
But they did meet last week, and they are going to... $5,000 to the... No, they... Well, they're taking out the holes and they're putting in legs. Oh, yeah. They are going to do a...
Another five? They're going to give another five? Because they've given more than four.
It's a matching grant, but they're taking the five, they'll contribute five to it.
Ah, you know, we could probably request copies of the minutes from... The zoning hearing board doesn't need that much either, unless there's an issue. And usually, Ron always did report on the planning commission, but planning...
Basically, we want to consider asking him to give us at least a quarterly report, even if we had no meetings.
Yeah, we can do that. Department reports, Joe?
Public Works?
Payment program has been completed. This year, everything went great. It was so smooth, it was almost eerie. We walked through with you inspector, and there was no punch list of anything to do. I'm very satisfied with Dairy Construction's work. The gas company had went in with us on Grand Street. I talked to Mr. Gray about the work that was done for LMA. Inspected it, it looked equally as good. The entire project is done. We're just waiting for the bill, and incidentally, because it went so smooth, it should be a little under budget, which is good news. The other thing, I only wish Ken was here to hear it. We finally, after five years, have grew out the crosswalks where I think was our original intent five years ago, to have looked... An extremely lot of good favorable comments, especially from the school and the people down around the elementary school. It is something that's going to have to take a little maintenance down the road, you know, now and then, but I think by them standing out now, they finally served the intention that was meant to be.
I wanted to comment on those, Joe, and thank you for that, and congratulate you and your staff for doing such... For getting it done finally. And, you know, I did call Ken Baldmarry when I saw you down by LES and said, "You need to get in your car and come down to LES." And he did come down, didn't he?
Yes.
So, yeah, it looks really nice, so... Well done. Chief Boomer?
Rocky is home. He's doing very well. He's responding very well to the surgery. He had an infected cyst on his kidney. Part of the kidney had to be removed where the infection was. He's showing us signs of infection right now, and he's responding very well. There's a very probable chance that he'll be back to work in the not-too-distant future. Also, I want to let everyone know that next Wednesday is the reality tour, the kickoff for that. And Thursday is the Citizens Police Academy. There's still room in the Citizens Police Academy. It's a 10-week program that'll be Thursday nights up until the end of October, around the end. Also, I was contacted by the Red Cross, and they have a recovery trailer or an assist trailer that they were requesting that could be parked at City Hall Parking Lot. It would only take one space, and it's not much larger than a car. It's a small trailer. They asked me if they could put it there because it signifies that it's available if somebody's flooded or there's a fire and they need assistance. I talked to Wayne about it, and he referred me to council. He said it would be better that we run it by council, so I just wanted you to kick it around, maybe you could bring it up under new business. I did speak with Joe, and we were under kind of the agreement that it's not really a problem until it will become a problem and then have to move it if something would come up. So I would ask that I could give her a response, maybe by the end of the evening, if you could let me know, I could call her tomorrow. That's all I have. See you.
Thanks, Chief. Chief Brazili?
On the same note, as Chief Boomer just said, I was contacted by the Red Cross also, and our sentiments are the same. I told them I didn't see a problem with it, and also, they've contacted me. I met with them on last Tuesday. They're going to... We're going to be partnering with the Red Cross for a safe program. This Friday, we will be casing some of the town, looking at areas of need that may not be able to afford smoke detectors and handouts. What we'll do is take some firemen around the different areas of the town and see where we want to install these smoke detectors for these people. They'll also be coming to our fire prevention program on October 8th over at Family Video there, is where we do that, between the hours of 6:00 and 9:00. And the trailer, if there is a problem, we have a backup plan. I did met with Julie and Mike Felice, and we told them possibly we can move it down to Number One's area if we had a problem in the corner of Huber Hall's parking lot. So if it would become a problem here, we could possibly move it down there.
How big of a trailer is it?
It's like Chief Boomer said, it's probably the size of a small car. Car, it's not very big. It's smaller than our can trailer that we used to have, so... Just some good camaraderie between us and the Red Cross and all parties involved, so that's it.
Thank you. Ann? Is Ann here?
No, Ann, I don't really... She wasn't there.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Kelly, on to the agenda items.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item appears under the Administration Finance Department. It is a resolution. It is entitled Renewal of Communication Agreement with EarthLink Business on behalf of themselves or the subsidiary or subsidiaries of EarthLink Inc. Basically, we have already had a contract with EarthLink for a number of years. Now, therefore, be it resolved, Section 1. The Council of the City of Latrobe, formerly the Borough of Latrobe, does hereby authorize and approve entering into a renewal addendum with EarthLink Business for the provision of telecommunications and/or data services to the city, which is the customer. Said renewal is for a period of three years from the date of the ending of the current agreement, and the renewal form is attached as Exhibit A. Section 2 authorizes the mayor, city manager, city secretary, or any other pervert city officer to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry to effect this resolution. I might also add that by doing so, we are going to save approximately $4,000 plus over a three-year period. The motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
Question, is this for internet service, data service, or... They provide or they host our website? Or both?
It's mostly for the phone systems everywhere and for the lines in the fire stations, the outside fire stations. We still have Comcast here in this building and up at the transfer station. We had a quote from Comcast that looked pretty good until EarthLink was giving this discount, this $4,160 discount over three years. And because it's too close in the price, it's really not worth the disconnecting of everything that we have to go and change our phone systems over Comcast, especially since we have a police station here, a fire station here, and we can't be down, you know, for a couple days until we get things switched out. So we decided to just skip the 4G out and go with this savings.
And just wanted to add that work took a lot of time and effort to look into the preparations, and it really came down to the point where you weren't going to save anything of significance, but the opportunity to switch, to have downtime, was being significant.
Is there any change in the service? Is there any faster link speeds or anything with them?
No, and I had discussed with Chief Brazili about the other fire stations, for what they're using the internet service for. It really is not going to be that great of a need for them to have a faster internet service. Now, we'll still get the regular Comcast here in this building and a transfer station, but for those fire stations that are not open most of the time anyhow, it just wasn't worth the change.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 201449. Mr. Givernangelo?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith? Yes? Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Kravner?
Yes.
Mr. Scibora?
Yes.
Mayor Wolfert?
Yes.
There's seven, yes.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is a resolution, and it's not generally in the form that we usually have because this is a resolution that is part of an E-grant. The nature of the resolution is to authorize, well, two things, I should say. First, to have the city become the applicant and not the Park and Rec Commission for a grant from the Department of Community and Natural Resources for the revitalization of the old athletic field. And the reason for that is that we, the city, are the owner of the field, and DCNR will not grant or issue the grant to the commission which does not own the field. So there's a letter making that request and a copy of that letter to be signed by Mr. Jones was attached to your packet. The resolution then designates Wayne Jones, our city manager, to be the individual who will sign documents with regard to the grant. It would still be administered by the Park and Rec Commission. I would point out to council that in considering this, there was an oral commitment, nothing more, and certainly not by council, by our previous city manager, that the city would contribute $15,000 to this project. Now, that figure has been reduced to $10,000 by Ms. Ashley, at least in communication with her. It does... It can be paid in one year, it can be paid in over two years. But I wanted council to be aware that that did occur prior to voting on this, so that you can vote your conscience on this particular resolution.
What are they going to do?
First of all, before we can discuss, we need a motion in a second, correct?
Yeah. Let's get a motion.
And then we can still vote it down, but we need a motion in a second before we can discuss. Can I have a motion?
Yes. Oh, my God.
Okay, and then, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now we can discuss it.
I wish I knew.
Well, I'm not trying to be funny, I just... The DCNR grant is for renovations at the athletic field. And specific... And specifically, the renovations I can speak to. I don't know if you can speak specifically to the renovations or not. This thing kind of came up at the last minute because Park and Rec applied for the grant themselves, which is typically what they do, is in applying for the grants, except that because the city owns the property, then the city can't be the applicant. And when all this happened is when we discovered that there was apparently a letter and an oral commitment made to, for the city to contribute towards that. And in discussions with Barb, what we think we've, you may recall, was that Alex was going to build that into next year's budget.
Right, that's what he had written in his letter of support for this, that the city would give $15,000 and it would be put in the budget for next year. The project is at the end of that new Lincoln Avenue Greenway Trail. And it's in the athletic field around where the, right, around the playground area. And I have more of the documents, if anybody wants to look at these.
And I don't think this is something that we can delay because there's a deadline. I don't know what the deadline is.
Yes, it seemed like Kathy Franklin was trying to get this resolved. In order to go forward with the grant.
And do you remember, I don't have a copy of it, do you remember how much it was, the amount? How much the grant, the whole grant?
I want to say $140,000 worth. The whole grant?
Yeah, was it $140?
$117,000.
Okay. We got $117,000 from DCNR.
The total grant was $17,000.
Coming from us.
And there's another one, we contributed by Latrobe.
Right, yeah.
So, does this grant come from books then? You're saying this grant does require a $10,000 city match?
Yes, it does.
Well, I don't know. I think, I don't know that that, I'm not sure that the city has to do that, but I think that's what the city had agreed to do.
Madam Mayor, I have also a suggestion. I don't think there's anything in the world that is that imminent that we could not delay this to the agenda session, set it up for a public meeting and have Ms. Ashley here to explain exactly what this is all about and answer the questions that they've voted.
I agree completely. Just bear in mind that we do own this property and that we don't have to spend a lot of money to upkeep this property because the foundations do that for us, so I just...
I think there was a timeline to get this.
That's what I think, too. Do you have a copy of the grant?
I don't know.
Is there a deadline on there anywhere?
That pavilion down there is already nice and the playground is pretty nice. The only people that are using it primarily right now are, you know, teenagers smoking, so I don't know how much money we want to put into that right now. And the playground's nice, the deck hockey's nice, the hoop place is nice, the bleachers could use a little bit, but...
It says here that it's for ADA access, improvements to softball fields, basketball courts, restrooms, a new pavilion, landscaping benches, trash receptacle signage, and connection to the new Lincoln Avenue Trail and Greenway Park Trailhead.
Why don't we do as I suggested, Madam Mayor, let's just table it. We're only talking two weeks. And I'll advertise it as a public meeting, therefore if we want to act, we can. And also we'll ask Ms. Ashley to be here to explain the nature of the improvements and why she feels it's necessary and so on. I think there are a lot of questions and we just...
So, I need a motion to table this right now, even though I have a motion a second on the floor.
But we need to move it off the floor, so move and second. So, you're voting now and that's just a ready for motion.
So, all in favor of tabling this vote? Then you pose? Motion carries.
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is an ordinance. It's been duly advertised and it is an ordinance to repeal our current housing code and to adopt the 2012 Property Maintenance Code. It's a very long ordinance, so obviously I'm not going to read it. The title is Repeal of Current Housing Code Provisions and Adoption of International Property Maintenance Code. In effect, we are repealing Chapters 132, which are our housing standards, 112, the numbering of buildings, Chapter 104, brush grass and weeds, Chapter 85, specifically one subsection pertaining to the property owners requirement to keep sidewalks free from obstruction. Those are all being repealed. And in its place will be substituted the Property Maintenance Code. The ordinance that has been provided to you has indicated there will be some changes, if you will, to the existing provisions in the Property Maintenance Code. And they are listed throughout the ordinance. As I indicated, the ordinance has been duly advertised. I know Ms. Powell believes very strongly that this will be a great help to the city to have this new property maintenance code. The motion would be to adopt the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Absolutely.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion?
Oh, yes. On that, I understand that she wants to have a, she has to fight on this stuff here. Doesn't she have the right citations it is right now and then it goes to the magistrate?
From what I understand, the additional item that this helps is that in order for her to go into a piece of property to look and see what's, if there is a violation, she needs either the owner's permission or the current renter. With this provision, if she's been informed it is a safety issue, she can go in without their permission. Now, she would notify them, but I'm still without their permission.
What happens, I think, sometimes is people move out and they complain and the owner won't let her in. And the renter's gone and the owner won't let her in, yes, sir. You go ahead.
My question is this. First of all, you're saying she'll be able to go and get a warrant, is that correct?
She can seek one.
Is she, well, is she, is that legal?
Absolutely.
The way I see this ordinance is, for those of you that are landowners and landlords that keep their properties within code and a lot of you, most of you do, there's not, I don't think there's going to be an issue. I think it's going to be an issue for, you know, the people that we are trying, the situations that we're trying to correct.
The way I understood this, if I understood it properly, if a third party decides, hey, we believe there's code violation there, but I'm not talking about the tenant or the landlord. That's the way I understood it, if I read it correctly.
That's possible.
So, let's say for some reason, somebody has a problem with you for whatever reason. So, now they come to, with the CAND, they say, hey, you know, this guy, he has code problems with his property just because they're angry with him about something. She can get a warrant.
It's not, it's not quite that easy. To get the warrant, she has to present testimony to the magistrate. And that testimony has to come from this third party that is complaining. Now, if somebody has a burr up, it's, you know what? And that's the only reason, I would like to think the magistrate would say, this is a vindictive act by somebody and the warrant will not be granted. So, I mean, it has to be based upon cause and proven cause.
My next question, today, I've just decided I'll take 20 minutes to just drive around town here. But I have a list in that 20 minutes of properties that I saw that are just in horrible condition. They're occupied, falling apart, some of them are occupied. If you go down to the end of Cafford Street Extension, looks like Freddie Latanz is going to take over. You know, my question is, we feel like we're constantly being hammered. But meanwhile, all these other properties in this town that look like they do, I never see anything in the paper about those properties. It's just the dirty landlords. You know, we work hard, this isn't...
And I, we respect that, sir.
Can I make a comment, Madam?
Sure.
We have had housing codes...
Whether they say yes or not, so go ahead.
We've had housing codes for years. All this is doing is we're getting rid of old and antiquated housing codes and substituting a uniformed Property Maintenance Code so that if you own property in Mount Pleasant or you own it in Latrobe or you own it in Dairy, anyone with the 2012 Maintenance Code, you're going to have a knowledge of what is acceptable and what is not. We're trying to make this more efficient, both for the landlord as well as for the city.
That's understood. It's the warrant thing to me, it seems like now you're going to criminalize.
That's for renters or owners. So, if someone had a problem with me, they could do the same thing for me. So, it's not just punishing you. If I had something wrong with my house, they could come and warrant my house and come look at it. So, it's not just renters, I understand the renters.
Your residence, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
This is a tool, sir. Anyone who is maintaining their property in the right way, if asked by our code officer to view that property, I would like to think they would say, sure, come on in. I have nothing to fear and nothing to hide. It's only when people deny access to the code officer, when she has at least some reasonable suspicion that there may be some violations. I could point out a violation years ago where water was coming down through the ceiling into the ceiling line from a shower above. That's a dangerous condition. So, you know, if you don't have anything to hide, why would you be worried about it?
Yes. Just so you all know, this is rarely out of order, but I'm going to let it go because I think it's an important issue. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind stating your name, please, too, so we have it for the record.
My name's Jack Fager.
Okay, I knew that, but not everybody else knows. John?
John Coons. Rosie, why do some people, though, in Latrobe continuously get away with having awful, awful properties forever and ever and ever? And I get a letter in the mail on a property and as I tell people, there's not a property I own I wouldn't put my daughter in because I'm not a slumlord.
I understand.
But I get a letter in the mail that if I don't cut some tree branches on a Weldon Street property, that they'll be cut and I'll get a bill. You know, I don't, that's okay, I understand what you got to do. But they were cut the next day and I sent the letter back to Anne, done, hope you're happy. But continuously, as Jack said, I can ride around and find numerous properties and Jack didn't know who was at the end of Cafford Street. I do know who's at the end of it, but why do they continuously, and I like the person, get away with having a junkyard?
Part of, and I share, trust me when I tell you, I share your frustration, okay? A lot of times what happens is Anne, a lot of the things that happen is Anne gets a phone call and somebody, a lot of times people complain. It's not, I mean, Anne does get out there and drive around, but I doubt very much she's going to make a big deal about, like, some of these tree branches unless she gets a call or a complaint from someone who says, you know, my tree branches, the tree branches are scraping up against my car or something like that. We'll send a letter, which gives the landowner or landlord a certain amount of time to correct the problem. And what often happens is they correct the problem and then let it happen again. I mean, it's just, it's kind of a continuous circle. Every time I've talked to Anne about some of these properties, she could pull you out the documentation of where she wrote the letters or where, you know, where she gave the notice. And they cleaned up as much as they had to clean up. And it's just a continuous circle. They don't have enough teeth in them. And I think that's part of what we're trying to do here, is to give it a little bit more teeth. We're not picking on landlords or homeowners or anybody. I think we all want our next-door neighbor's property to be as nice as ours and, you know, and the town, as people drive around it. I don't want people to see, we don't want people to see 20, 20 or 30 houses that are like that. But we know we have problems and we know we have repetitive problems. And we try and it's not easy.
The reason we feel this way is, you know, you open up the newspaper and it's the landlord. I don't know whether it was Mr. Bolmarri who was last spring saying we were the problem in this town. Someone made that comment.
The other Mr. Bolmarri.
Okay, it was Kenny.
The other Mr. Bolmarri. We are, I, I think, you know, I think I speak for many of us, if not all of us, when I say that landlords like you and Mr. Coons and Mr. Miller and people that take care of your properties are the kind of landlords we want. I mean, ideally, we would prefer homeowners, people, you know, but, you know, we recognize the fact that we have a lot of good landowners. My dad's, my dad's a renter, he has rental property. He has, he owns rental property, he's not a renter, but he owns rental property. There are a lot of good landlords in this town. And yeah, probably a couple give everybody a bad name. But you're not the problem. The problem are the landlords that don't live in the town and that don't take care of the town. And so, I, those are the people that we need to be able to go after and to correct. Anybody want to chime in here? I don't mean that off the microphone, but...
Those blighted homes that you're talking about, if we don't change the ordinances to speak, to give Anne some sort of foundation and backing for her to go in and fix them. Right now, she doesn't, the ordinance aren't there that state that she's allowed to go in and fix them. So, she, the intention is not to fix the good places, it's to fix the bad ones.
Here's the problem I see. There are a lot of people in town who are struggling, make very little money. Most of them, I will say, are not landlords. So, how do you, how are you going to force those people to do something they can't afford to do? And I guess the feeling I get, and I don't know about other landlords, is the landlord can afford to do it or he can raise his rents or whatever. And that's, I think that's another reason I feel like we're always being picked on. I don't know how you're going to do it, even if she has, can get a warrant. How do you do that? And why is it possible?
Basically, if there is a violation, code violation, there is a safety hazard like the water coming down into the ceiling. If the landlord refuses to repair that, then that apartment is going to be shut down and no tenant will reside in there until it is fixed.
That, I understand. But I'm talking about, now you're talking about landlords. I'm talking about people who own their own homes. It's about homeowners, you know what I'm saying? If it's good for us, it's got to be good for everybody else.
And I agree, and that's just a part of homeownership. That's what you have to say. If you want to own a home, you have to keep up the home. If you don't want to own a home and you don't want to keep it up, then they're going to rent off of, I'm not singling you out, but they're going to rent off of you and then you keep it up. So, I own a home, so I have to keep it up to the code of the town that I live in. Just like you own a home that you rent to people, so you have to keep it up. So, it's not just for you, it's for everyone. I know, I hear what you're saying. If people can't afford it, then you have to choose if you're going to be a homeowner or a renter. And if you can't be a homeowner and keep up with it, then that's the choice.
Yes, sir.
I've read the new ordinance. The new ordinance does not specifically cite landlords. God bless you guys for keeping and maintaining properties. I lived in vicinity of a guy that has thumbed his nose at the code for the past 10 years, according to the post office. I talked with the postal ladies and how long has that house been falling in? 10 years. Anne, they stand behind us to help us, not hurt us. Anne needs teeth to get this guy. I'll get the guy, but I'll go to Jim. All right? The house has fallen in.
Yes, Jim.
I've lived beside a house that for 40 or 50 years has had problems. And Anne has sent them letters. However, when the letters, when they don't take care of them, the city will not spend the money to, let's say, remove the shrubs or trees and then put the lien against the property.
We have done that. We've done, we've had grass and put liens. We've done, we've done some of that over the years and put liens on, but everything, you know, probably not. Yes?
My name is Hope McIntyre. I think what these guys are complaining about, and I am too, is if I'm a landlord and I got a tenant that has a problem, where does Anne Powell come in? It'd be like, if she sends me, if I got a tenant sends me a letter that says I have a problem in an apartment and I don't fix it, then I can see Anne Powell coming in. But what you're saying is wrong. I can accuse you of murder and where's the proof? Before Anne Powell can come into my property, she has to have proof. I mean, you know, if I...
That's exactly what I said to the gentleman a moment ago.
If I rent to this gentleman here and he has a problem, he goes to Anne Powell, not to me, how do I know it means fixed? Or how do I know I...
Well, then that's something certainly, sir, you have to raise if Anne gets in touch with you. The bottom line is, wait, let me explain one thing. Nobody goes for an administrative warrant if either the landlord or the tenant will allow, admits to see what the problem is. allow admittance to see what the problem is.
Well, we're.
It's only if either one or both of them refuse admittance, admittance, that the administrative warrant could be sought. Let me just say one other thing. Everybody's saying, oh, we're picking, we're picking. We have had housing standards and codes that are similar to what's in the property maintenance for years. That's nothing new. The Property Maintenance Code is better refined, better worded than what we've had, so we're just trying to make that better. The administrative warrant, we've had that for years, but it only applied to two kinds of properties, and that was vacant or abandoned. Now we're saying if it's an occupied property and we can't gain admittance, and we have reason to believe that there is a code violation which is posing a safety hazard, yes, we will go for the administrative warrant, but we have to establish that to the local magistrate.
But first, we would, first, if we had a call from your tenant, and he said, you know, "I've got a problem, there's, I don't know, bare wires," or something like that, okay? Now, if your tenant, we would ask the tenant, I would hope, "Did you contact your landlord?" And that would.
That's exactly.
Okay? And probably what we would do, because we have some liability now, too, okay? Now that we're notified, the city does, so Ann would, Ann would call you and say, "Hey, your tenant called me." She's just not going to automatically go get a warrant and without talking to the landlord first and say, "Hey, can I come in and take a look at this?"
The first thing the magistrate is going to say is, "Well, did you contact the landlord to gain admittance?"
Okay, is, but what do you consider? Like, if I want to throw a person out of a house, I got to send them a thirty-day letter. Is that, is that what you're considering? The tenant has to send the landlord a letter stating that there's a problem in the house? So there's some kind of trial? I mean, that'd be like me saying, "Mr. Kelly's house is a piece of crap, and go check it."
Well.
That's what.
In order to get the warrant, you got to go before the magistrate, and that tenant's going to have to go and testify.
Or whoever raised the allegation.
Or whoever raised the allegation, right. Hey, look, is it perfect? No, okay? And I think we're worried about something that's probably not going to happen, because you guys that all have, take care of your properties, we're not going to have those issues. I mean, you might get a tenant that's mad at you and wants to cause trouble for you, but we know your reputation. Ann knows who the problem children are and who the problem landowners are. And, and, you know, she'll pick up the phone, she'll call you. Chances are, you'll say, "Come, come look at it." And what, if that happens, there's no need for a warrant. Okay? Yeah, yeah, come on, come on.
This has been going on for a number of years. A few years back, I don't remember how long it was, but you guys, you weren't here, but wanted to license and register rental properties on each other with a fee. Well, at that time, Ann and I had a little discussion, and she was saying, "I have the power to come into your property, blah, blah, blah." In fact, whatever. Now, my point then was, if you're going to do that to us, do it to every property in Latrobe. If I own a duplex here, and there's a single-family property over here, why would I, I know this isn't happening, this is what you're talking about now, but why would I have had to pay a fee? I'm a taxpayer, too. You know, why would I have had to pay a fee and have that property? Meanwhile, my neighbor didn't have to have a fee and didn't have to be registered. Now, the only other thing I want to say is, this is Tuesday, August 26, 2014, okay? June said Monday morning that up until now, either the landlord or the tenant of the property had to request an inspection. The only reason I wanted to read that was, that's all you see, landlord, tenant. So meanwhile, you know, the whole town, you know, we're all being targeted as bad guys. That's all I'm saying.
Sir, one thing, this is called the Property Maintenance Code. It's not called the Landlord Maintenance Code. It's not called the Residence.
But you know what? And the other thing, I think the problem is, in a lot of Westmoreland County, there's a lot of issues with absentee landlords, and there's so much publicity in the papers and on the news about this kind of stuff, and by no means do we, but I understand where you're coming from, and by no means do we intend for that to just.
And if you've never been a landlord, you have no idea how difficult this is. It is a tough, tough job. Some days, I wonder why I even do it, because I have no protection, you know?
I understand.
But all I'm saying is, I think we all believe that we all want a nice, a nice city, but we constantly feel like it's us, 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 and it's not.
It's not. I agree. There's a few bad apples that can give everybody, you know, it's the law of averages, it's the eighty-twenty rule, you know?
I think as soon as you start talking warrant, it just sounds like, no, not murder criminal, you know?
Understand.
Unfortunately, that's the term law I use, is I can't change it.
Where were we? When we got, when we.
You have a first and a second.
I have a first and a second. So I think we've had enough discussion. Ms. Buck?
This is ordinance 2014-6. Mr. Baldmirey?
Yes.
Mr. Jivin Angela?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vote a seven, yes.
Mayor, members of council, the next item comes up under the Public Works Department, and it is a motion, a simple motion. I'll read it, I move. We authorize the city manager or his designated to post the position of mechanic according to the provisions of the ASME collective bargaining agreement. Further, if no bidding occurs from a union member or an individual who may bid the job is not a qualified candidate, then and in that event, the city manager or his designated is further authorized to advertise for this position. Lastly, if the mechanic position is filled by a current employee who has bid upon the same, then and in that event, the city manager or his designated is authorized to advertise for a potential candidate to fill the current employee's position.
Do I have a motion to authorize the internal posting? And if no position is filled, an internal, an external posting, correct? Advertising.
I'll make that motion as spread out to Mr. Kelly.
Second, please.
I'll second it.
Questions or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
The next item, Madam Mayor, members of council, is also a resolution, and it's entitled authorizing the donation of 722-gallon recycling containers to Westmoreland Cleanways, whereas the city previously purchased over 722-gallon recycling containers with grant funding, whereas the grant funding regulations permit the city to donate unused recycling containers to other qualified entities, and whereas Westmoreland Cleanways is a qualified entity for resuing the unused and unneeded recycling containers, now therefore be resolved, section one, that the council of City of Latrobe hereby authorizes and approves the donation of 722-gallon recycling containers to Westmoreland Cleanways. Section two, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, or any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary to carry into effect this resolution. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
I have one question. Will these, these containers have the City of Latrobe on the side of them or something? Will they be removed if they go to other communities?
They cannot be removed. They will be the property of Westmoreland Cleanways, and they'll be loaned out different times, back and forth, for different events and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Did we just have a surplus, Jim?
Pardon me?
Did we just have two purchases too many?
Yes, originally, we had, what, several thousand of these, and they've carried us over three years.
Oh, the little ones.
The little ones.
Oh, I'm thinking the new ones.
So now that we have the big ones, and we went to single stream, there's no need.
Not the black and orange ones.
And incidentally, the city manager does have a letter that was provided us by PA Cleanways, so if there's ever an audit of that grant stuff, we have a paper trail.
Ms. Buck? This is resolution 2014-50. Mr. Baldmirey?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Jivin Angela?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vote a seven.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item, also under Public Works, is a resolution, and it's entitled Designating a Certain Fifteen-Foot Alleyway as Trolley Lane. And this is the alley that extends, I'm trying to think, from Irving Avenue, I believe, to the property of the Great Latrobe School District. There is a residence located on that alley. It's 1531 Lignier Street Rear, and the reason we're doing this is that that address is not at the rear of any other property. It's a standalone address. So the resolution reads, now therefore be resolved, section one, that a public thoroughfare, which is now an alley, and which is more or less fully described on exhibit A attached here, too, being the same, is hereby designated as a roadway identified as Trolley Lane. Section two, that the city hereby changes the address for the property known as 1531 Lignier Street Rear to 1531 Trolley Lane, Latrobe, Pennsylvania, 15650. Section three, that the city secretary be and is hereby authorized and directed to send a certified copy of this resolution to any and all proper entities, including but not limited to 911 EMS, the city fire and police departments, and the United States Postal Service. Section four, that this resolution shall become effective immediately. The motion would be to adopt the resolutions outlined.
May I have a motion?
Do you want to make the motion?
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 2014-51. Mr. Jivin Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmirey?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vote a seven.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the last item under the Public Works Department is a resolution. It is entitled Authorizing an Encroachment-Easement Agreement with Justin M. Pavlik and Kylie D. Pavlik. It reads, now therefore be resolved, section one, that the council of the City of Latrobe hereby grants a variance for property owned by Justin M. Pavlik and Kylie D. Pavlik, located at 1636 Ridge Avenue, Latrobe, from the provisions of section 85-8 of the code ordinances of the City of Latrobe. Further, council also grants to Mr. and Mrs. Pavlik an encroachment license for a six-foot high stockade privacy fence to encroach into the right-of-way of a twenty-foot alley abiding the southerly property line of the Pavliks. Said encroachment license agreement is attached as exhibit A. Section two, that the variance in encroachment license is granted upon the following condition: if the current owner of the property should become deceased, or if the property is transferred by gift or sale, or if the fence becomes in a state of disrepair, require a replacement, or if the property owner shall violate any provisions of the encroachment license agreement and shall fail to correct said violation upon notice from the city then, and in that event, the fence shall be removed off the right-of-way and onto the property of the current property owner, and the encroachment license agreement shall become null and void. Attached to the resolution is a proposed restricted encroachment license agreement. It does require the property owners at all time to maintain the fence. There will be no cost to the city. It also requires them that if there is an issue or a problem created by the fence, that they would correct it with a due diligence from the city. A copy of the restricted encroachment license agreement is attached. This does not transfer with the sale of the property, so it's only personal to the existing property owners at this time.
Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Questions or discussion? Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 2014-52. Mrs. Caldwell Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mr. Baldmirey?
Yes.
Mr. Jivin Angela?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
No.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vote a five, yes, two, no.
That concludes the agenda items.
Any unfinished business items that anyone wants to discuss?
Just the Red Cross.
I know, I have that under new business, but okay. We'll talk about that. Does anyone have a problem with us allowing the Red Cross to put that trailer in our lot? Anybody see a problem with that? No? Okay. Chiefs? You can let them know. Any other items of new business before we move on to the appointments? Yes, we're, sir, we have one more thing before we get to citizens' requests, if you don't mind. It's okay. We're, that's next, the open forum. Any other unfinished or new business before council? I have the appointment, other than that, we'll get into that. Okay. Next, we get to the appointment of the Water Authority, but before we do that, I wanted to explain, over the years, there's been a lot of confusion about these board appointments and how the Home Rule Charter has this set up. The Home Rule Charter, the mayor, as I've said many times, the mayor doesn't have, has one vote, just like every other council member, and the only other responsibility that the mayor has, or if you will, power, if there was, if the mayor had any power, is the opportunity to make appointments to boards and authority. But the mayor doesn't have sole power to do that, so the mayor makes the appointment, and then council has to approve or not approve the recommendation of the mayor. If council does not approve it, the mayor's not bound to put another candidate on the floor. The seat can remain vacant until the mayor chooses to either appoint someone that the council will overwhelmingly support or leave the vacancy open. This is the only situation under boards and authorities where nominations for those positions don't come from the floor, don't come from the council members. So I take this very important responsibility. I think staffing our boards and authorities with good, qualified people is very important, and I take that responsibility very seriously. We are fortunate on the Water Authority that we have six very strong candidates, all that have a lot of experience in a lot of different areas, a lot of community service, a lot of commitment to the community, so I think it's a tough decision to make. There's also been some discussion as to whether or not this appointment has to be a resident of the City of Latrobe. It does not. Mr. Kelly, correct me if I'm wrong, but currently, we have four members of the Water Authority that are Latrobe residents, and we are required to have a minimum of four. There's four, correct? We can have more than four, but there has to be one from Unity and one from Yellowstone. But see, we have five, because one would have been the fifth. And this position is to fill the vacancy that was created by the passing of Warren Marchionne. This position expires January 31 of 2015, and then the appointment will be up again. So I just wanted to, I wanted to get that out there so everybody understands how the process works. My nomination to the Water Authority Committee is Neil Fenton, and that's, that's my appointment.
I will read a resolution. The resolution is appointment to member of the Latrobe Municipal Authority. Now therefore be resolved, section one, that Neil Fenton, being is hereby appointed as a member of the Latrobe Municipal Authority to fill the unexpired term of Warren Marchionne, said term to expire January 31, 2015, resolved in council of the state. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
Do I need a motion and a second? We go through this every time.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to adopt and a second, just like any other.
Okay. I need a motion to adopt?
I'll make that motion.
I need a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
If in the information that you gave, with the qualified residents that are here, this particular situation doesn't pass, are you willing to nominate someone else from this qualified list of candidates?
Today?
Today.
Not today?
It's a yes or no answer.
Not today.
Thank you.
Okay, may I ask you why it wouldn't be today?
Because I, because I think that I would have to give other consideration and think about it a little bit more, because I think that Neil's obviously the most qualified candidate here. I guess I could ask the same question as to why, why we wouldn't want him.
Well, it's not that we wouldn't want him. I mean, it's all up to voting, everybody's vote, but my question is, we have four candidates that reside within the City of Latrobe, and I just was wondering why they wouldn't be as qualified as Neil. They already have an engineering firm.
I understand that, but residing in the city limits is not necessarily qualification of this position. You have to be a resident of the service area, first of all. Second of all, any of you that know Neil Fenton know that no matter where he lives, he's more Latrobe than half of us, and than most of the people in this room. The guy, just because he lives in Unity Township, doesn't mean he wouldn't do the right thing for Latrobe. And the third thing I have to say is, I don't want to perpetuate this Unity Township-Latrobe feud that is out there. I think, as Mr. Miller pointed out, you know, Neil, I know Neil will do the right thing for the City of Latrobe, but more importantly is what's in the best interest of the, all of the customers that use the water in the, underneath the municipal authority. Yes, they have an engineering firm, but I believe that Neil is the most qualified candidate that we have. And again, we have good candidates, and that's my decision to make.
And don't you feel that the Water Authority should have candidates on there, and if we have able-bodied people who are willing to step up to the plate to take over this position? If Neil makes it great, if he doesn't, there are other candidates on there that I think we ought to vote on tonight. If he doesn't make it, he may make it, and that's great. But I think leaving that position open for another month would not be the prudent thing to do as the mayor of this town and to represent the Lector Water Authority.
Well, I appreciate your opinion, Mr. Scabor, but I take this, I'm not going to make this decision lightly. If Neil doesn't get approved, then I'll have to consider what the other options, alternatives are.
We've got several months to review these candidates.
I know. You have my, you have my appointment. You have my nomination, so I just...
Let's vote.
Let's vote.
This is Resolution 2014-53. Mr. Scabor?
No.
Mr. Jimon Angela?
No.
Ms. Beazey?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Craigman?
No.
Mr. Baldmarry?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mayor Wolford?
Yes.
There is three yes, four no.
Let's move on to citizens' requests now. This is the open forum where people can discuss whatever they want.
My name is Jeffrey Miller. I live at 416 Fairmont Street. I was here last month to talk about a rat problem. I've done my research. I've lost over $3,800 in rat destruction in my house. I lost most of my personal belongings in my basement. I lost my Christmas tree. I lost my decorations. I lost half my kitchen, and my three-year-old is in harm's way. Why? We have a house at 415 Fairmont Street across the road that has been allowed to be vacant for seven years or more without anything but grass gunning and poison. I've taken upon myself to compile a photographic essay, a letter, and a statement of my loss for the solicitor. The house behind me on Walnut Street has been in safe disrepair for 10 years, back windows broken, doors are falling out of it, I can see through the property. I can assure you, none of these landlords would have had a property in that condition for 10 years. I have physically watched the rats come from the neighbors' motorhomes, cars, and trucks on Walnut Street, across the street into either myself, Wayne Robel's house...
My house.
Their house, his house. It's out of control. Across the street, I labeled one of the photographs the rats playground. 3:00 in the morning, I can't sleep. I got rats this big running around in my house. I'm worried about a three-year-old sleeper. I go out on the front porch with an Iron City, yes, I had a beer, and I watched the rats frolick in the front porch of that house. I put traps over there. I put my own money into a vacant property. I have put 47 bags of industrial-sized garbage out in my basement, two included, $288 dumpster from the city, full of my belongings because of inactivity or the failure of the city to maintain those properties. I did nothing wrong here. I'm between two rat-fested properties that have ran out of food and now like my house. Pictures of my kitchen are in there. Pictures of my house are in there. I ask to be reimbursed for my losses in an open forum. I have others who'd like to speak. Thank you.
My name's Steffi Ross. I live at 1409 Truman Avenue, and I do have rats also. I have one on my porch, it was on the screen, and I have one in the garage, and I had three in my house. And I was cutting hair one day, and a rat came up on my steps and looked in like a rabbit. So we definitely have a problem, and it's been at least five years. So I think we need stronger rat vet or something.
Good.
I'm Stefan Zunich. I live across from, right beside the 413.
413-1, I've fallen in on itself.
Yeah, I live at 411. We just moved in there, January, bought the house. I thought maybe it was just me, I don't know, you know, I just moved here, but we've been having a little bit of problems. Mainly, he just has like a pit of garbage in the middle of the, in the middle of his yard, excuse me, and just loose trash. It blows over to my yard, condom wrappers, tampon applicators, excuse me. I got a little baby over there, I can't have that. Rats, I found a rat dead in my house. I heard them the next night fighting or something else, which I hope isn't that, in my wall. Yeah, I'm kind of upset, but this guy, he's the thunder here.
Yes, the nut.
But yeah, I mean, they, these people have been here forever. I mean, and he told me about it a couple weeks ago, about the meeting, but, I mean, I know neighbors directly behind us, behind me, lives two doors down, they've called numerous times apparently. I didn't want to be the guy calling, you know, hey, the new guy's calling in here, you know, on my property, so I just kind of let it play itself out.
Sir, a question, is the property vacant or not?
No, there's somebody living there.
Somebody living there, it's fallen in on itself, and I'm glad this new went through for Mrs. Powell to go, and there's two properties up right in between.
One is vacant, one isn't, correct?
Right.
The guy's living there.
Yeah, the guy's living there on Walnut, and in the pictures, it's the brown photograph. You can see through that house. It's dangerous, she's boarding up the front windows, that thing's going to burn. You drop a match in there, chief, you're going to be standing outside.
All the windows on my side are completely, there's not one window on my side.
The vacant house is on Fairmont Street.
Right, next to where...
The one that looks like it's vacant.
I know about the Fairmont Street one, because we talked about Alan the last time.
And it doesn't look vacant. The one that's next to him looks like it should be vacant. There's somebody living there.
It's really bad.
Wayne's taking notes, we'll have Ann follow up. But I know Ann's been working with you, Mr. Miller.
You know what, I have to say this in open court too. That's my city, that's my council, they work for us, we work together, I don't really think on people. Thank you. I want my money back, but thank you. Ann was tried, I called, and I had a dumpster in front of my house within like an hour and a half. My city is responding to this. Unfortunately, I get up every morning, and I got a dead rat somewhere in my house. The last one I got was next to my coffee pot, game on.
Do you know about the other property they're talking about?
He's got a picture on his phone.
415 Walnut, Ann's been out, and as Mr. Miller knows, I mean, she's baited it on August 12th, August 20th, August 26th, I mean, this particular building has really taken up, as Mr. Miller's aware of, a lot of city resources.
Is that one of the ones we talked about, we met with April?
Yeah.
Okay, in the land bank?
Yes. And the one next to Ann's got, is on.
Now that one is on Walnut?
Yeah, it's way gone.
413?
413.
The pictures that I provided, you can see through the house.
I saw that.
You can see through the house.
We'll have to look in the download.
I don't know, I've only ever seen the guy like twice.
Yeah, he doesn't show up, I wait for him. I'd like to talk to him and find out if he's hurt, injured, mentally handicapped, or whatever, maybe we could help the guy. But I always putz around my garage and stuff looking for some type of movement or something. It's like 13 Adams Lane. There's nobody there. The cars are unregistered, the motorhome's full of rats, the car's full of rats.
So have you not seen life over there?
No, there's definitely...
There's life.
There's a person.
The guy behind me, who in the picture, you see, he's got a really cool truck, but anyhow, he was 1963 Echolite. He was cutting his grass, and he couldn't get the mower between the houses. The guy came out, pushed the weeds back, took a coat hanger and a screw gun, and screwed the weeds against the house rather than cut them. He said he just stood there and looked at them, like, what the hell are you doing? He pushed the weeds up and secured them to the house rather than cut the weeds.
Okay, yes ma'am.
Hi, I'm Andrea Sutcliffe, I live at 411 Walnut Street, and I don't like to ruffle feathers, but I think that, you know, everyone is entitled to live however they want, for their, whatever reasons they may have, but I think it becomes an issue when, like, obviously ordinances exist for purposes, and when it's like encouraging on our safety, and like my husband was saying about the garbage blowing over in the springtime after the snow, and it just kept blowing through there. We had discussed putting a privacy fence and having the land surveyed and such, but...
I don't have the money for that.
But, not just that, but...
Ms., you're going to speak up a little bit, start here.
The bushes are growing into the boat, and RV parked in his yard, and so we weren't even like sure how to address that, or like they're growing between there. And I know, I had spoken with our neighbor earlier today, he couldn't come, but he was saying how he had gotten, I guess, letters about having a car uninspected, got taken care of, you know, and everything, but he was wondering if these needed to be inspected, or if it's like legal for them, I guess the ordinance says for them just to be sitting there like that. And I think that's what everyone was saying earlier, when not knowing how to keep up with that.
We'll follow up on that, Wayne will follow up with that, on that house with Ann, and get back to someone, is there?
What?
And we'll get back to you guys.
I was just going to say, I worked with the guy that owns the house on the other side of me, 409. He rents that place out, and he said he was pulling weeds, and he found a rat. He was just telling me that today, because I told him about this, and unfortunately, he couldn't make it, but, you know, he was having troubles too, apparently. They have a little girl, people he's renting to has a three-year-old.
To your point, ma'am, it's a safety and health issue, when it becomes, I mean...
The rats are getting really big.
Yeah, well...
They were small.
John?
Without mentioning names, is that a, is that a homeowner that lives in that alley?
I don't know, John, but I'll go find out and let you know.
It's across the street from one that I own, I was telling Jack about it.
Do you know? Is it a landowner?
I'm not either. I'm not either.
I don't know.
It's going off.
My name's Teddy Lawd. I'm in Latrobe. I just had a question, the international property management, where can that be viewed? Is that on your website, or?
You can come to the office and we'll...
But is that on the internet somewhere? No.
It's not on there yet, because we just passed it tonight, it will be on there.
But that's an international code, that's not just Latrobe.
Oh, okay, it's not on our website.
Okay. But it's the same code?
Yes.
And just secondly, one...
Sir, with some modifications by our ordinance, I want to clarify.
It's not exactly the same.
There are some sections that have been modified in the ordinance, so you really need to take the code and the ordinance and look at them together.
And you can get that how?
Here, or at the Adams Library, they have a copy as well.
We have a copy. And just real quick, you had said that Latrobe Municipal Authority position expires 1/31/15. Inheret says 1/31/16, just for the record.
Was up at the end of 2015, am I...
Maybe this is just a typo.
That's a typo, it's 15, I'm sorry.
Thank you, though.
Anything else under the open forum?
Can I comment on John and Jack? The landlords?
Yes.
The house on Fairmont Street, to your question about are they landlords or landowners?
No, that's on Walnut.
I know, but the one on Fairmont that is also a problem was a landowner that just abandoned the house and never came back and never looked twice, so...
And can you assume he's taken it?
It's still owned by a bank out west, and so it's gone through what, tax sale, but never share sale.
I just wanted to comment, maybe add something to what Ms. Beazey said. When you say there are properties existing in bad conditions, many of these are where we have difficulty in tracking down the owner. Most of them are good, many of them are banks. I know one property owner now is making it extremely difficult for anyone to find that person's whereabouts, but we're trying to locate that person. So that's part of the problem we're faced with, with a good many of these properties that do look bad.
It's a health issue, you don't have no problem at all, just condemn it.
Yes, it's a health issue.
I look at these pictures that I see here...
Yes, sir.
And we talked about the property code maintenance orders, we're talking about landowners that we don't know. We have to know the landowners of these property owners, someone's living there.
Yeah.
And I can't believe that our hands are tied, and I can't believe that it's financial, that we're not doing something over this. There has to be something in the way here stopping us from doing something to this property owner on Walnut Street.
That's why Ann needs the power. That guy's thumbed his nose, where that guy's done this to every letter he's ever gotten. I got a letter, I'm not going to lie to you, I got a letter for leaving two rags in the garbage bag out by my garage. I'm wrong. I got a letter because I had a tree by a telephone pole encroached in the alley. We fixed it, I spent a hundred bucks to cut the tree down. Was it in the right-of-way? Yeah. Did I care? No. Let's get it cleaned up, it needs to go anyhow. I paid the money and got rid of it. This guy's thumbed his nose at everybody and everything, and now I got rats, and I'll personally take care of it.
And when he does that, if this property owner is... How many letters can we actually send, or should we send Mr. Kelly before we actually put some teeth in to do something?
Well, I think, in my experience, Ann's going to have all this very well documented, unfortunately. It's unfortunate that she's not here today. I can't speak to this property, but I'm guessing she knows all about it, and if any of you were to sit down and talk with her about it, she would be able to tell you what she's done, and what needs to be done, and what extra teeth she's going to need. Yeah, Jim?
I think with this, with this ordinance that you're making, I think that you should also have in there that they're charged a fee every time Ann sent, or second time that Ann sent a letter, they should be charged for our services.
Well, we already approved whatever's in there, and I don't recall that being... There's some fees they have to pay. The magistrate fees, you were talking about the cost of the city, like Ann's time, or whatever, Kelly's time, or any of the costs associated with it that we get billed for. The one thing I did want to mention too is that Wayne and Ann and I met with April Copas from the county about the land bank. If you, if some of you remember about, a year ago or so, we opted into the county land bank. land bank, I think there's about 10 municipalities, and I think that's going to, that's going to be really advantageous. We've identified a couple of properties, as everything is complicated with red tape, it's not that easy, but I do think that we are going to see benefits from participating in that. There's two properties identified now, that hopefully, within the next six months or so, we may see either demolished, or renovated, or something done with them. So, again, it's a, it's a small, it's two, and we know there are many more, but we've got to start somewhere, so. Do we have a city manager's report?
Yeah, we have a couple of items on a good note. The R cap loan, which are a grant, which is part of the Latrobe parking garage funding, has been, the conditional applications have been approved, they'll come in and do a, an audit, and once that lot is completed, we can hopefully see some money from this grant, which is a good thing.
Nice work, Barb.
Yes, yeah, Barb, please be commended for that. Secondarily, Constellation is going to come in, they do energy audits, they're going to come in and speak to the group on the 22nd, but I talked to the gentleman, there's another group that's also spoke to you already, once we can do some analysis, I'm going to look for input from the council to see if they have the preference of one or the other. I think it's probably worth pursuing, I've done it in the past in other places, and we did see some savings, so, it's another opportunity to move forward. Lastly, you all saw the MNO in your packet, you can see the MNO obligation with pension is 315-091, which is up a little bit from last year, about $4,000. Our state aid's going to be down a little bit, it looks like about $7,000, so it's going to create an $11,000 difference in what you saw in budget last year to what we see in 2015, so, just a kind of heads up on that.
So what you're telling us, and telling the public, is that our municipal, our minimum municipal obligation to fund the, is the police pension, right? And any other pensions, both pensions?
Well, the only one that really, usually, typically with those towns and boroughs, it's the police side that has the largest draw, and therefore tends to get the MNO, cost, MNO cost, and all the state aid.
So the city owes, is on, owes the pension plan $315,091?
No, they're going to owe the bad and the bad though, too, about 156-301.
The state's contributing part of that.
Right. Last year it was 146.
But the city owes that, we're going to use state money to contribute?
Yeah. And the city, the city for the pension, yeah, pension, city's on the hook for the pension for 315.
If the state decides to not give us money next year, we have to come up with $315,091 to pay into the pension plan.
Yeah, it'll be slightly, probably grow up a little bit more, yeah. That's, that's the obligation of that type of pension plan.
Correct.
You know, that's something the council can look at if they downriver on this thing.
I think there's, there's legislation to inherit.
It's also a violation, you're limited, because they, it is act 500, and I think state aid is act 205.
Because every municipality's kind of in the same boat, they can't afford to pay their pensions, and they're making promises that long-term they can't keep.
It's a defined pension plan, and it is a good pension plan for those that retire.
Anything else?
That was it.
I just wanted to mention to everyone that the Halloween parade will be October 25th at 2:00, followed by trick or treat, which will be from 4 to 7. Once again, the Lions Club is going to be hosting the parade. And again, I just wanted to commend Barb on the great work she did to get that, to get that grant, all that information in for the grant. I know it was a lot of work at a difficult time, so thank you, and everybody that helped you. Joe, and again, thanks for the crosswalks, they look nice, it was a nice way to start the school year. Encourage everyone to participate in the Neighborhood Watch, I think it's going to be a really good opportunity for residents, as well as the Citizens Police Academy that the chief is starting beginning September 18th. You said there was still room and applicants, okay. And if anyone has anything else, otherwise, I'll ask for adjournment. A motion to adjourn? Who wants to go? Second? I'll second. All favor? Meeting adjourned.